Recording, sir.
All right, we'll call to order this meeting of the Amherst School Board to get ready for our deliberative preparation session. And a chance to review the Ways and Means report and discuss those as a group, something we've not had a chance to do. With all of our other meetings going on, so we'll call the order at five thirty one. With that, I will open up for public comment tonight in person. And do we have anything on Zoom, Steve? I didn't check that.
See.
Hadn't logged in yet. So we have a couple of attendees.
We do, we have, uh, we do.
All right, so if you would like to, uh, speak, we can have folks come in person here in the room. But if you'd like to speak online, you can certainly raise your virtual hand, put your name in the avatar, turn your camera on, and then you'll have three minutes to speak. Okay, so seeing none, uh, we do have a hard stop tonight. We want to try to make sure we're efficient in our, uh, agenda as we go through this tonight. Not that we don't try that every night, believe it or not. Terry Bean will be joining us a little bit later on. She was coming from another meeting as well. So first thing on our agenda is to, as a group, a collaborator collaborative group for the first time, be able to review and discuss, uh, the Ways and Means reports that are on the SAU thirty nine website. If you go to committees on the website, sau thirty nine dot org, uh, under committees, it's finance committees and then Amherst School. Ways and Means Committee, uh, they have a variety of reports there that they've done, some different analyses regarding the budget and some of the different. Uh, elements that go into a budget creation, uh, in terms of ASD costs, comparisons to other school districts using the DOE twenty five form. The educational value analysis regarding teacher contracts, and then they actually have two other reports that are still in a draft stage that this board has reviewed. Uh, the board's been asked to provide feedback on it, so, uh, what I will ask the board to do for those is to just to send any feedback you might have to me directly. And then we'll be able to collaborate, uh, combine all of our thoughts. We're not sending over the same comments multiple times. We'll combine those and then send it over to Ways and Means tomorrow and Friday. Just so that they have that, uh, and we don't want to put a report out there that they're looking for feedback on that we haven't had a chance to, um, provide that to them, so. We'll get that all the, uh, get all of that back to them. Uh, so. Focusing really on just a couple of different things tonight, overall budget, um, reviewing the Ways and Means voters, uh, voters guide and comments as well. Uh, opening up for Article thirteen first, Article twelve, we'll, we'll be able to share more on. At deliberative on Monday night and when that report is made public, so. I will open it up for Article thirteen, the overall budget at this point. Any thoughts, any, any comments, uh, where we want this to go for Article thirteen, Ways and Means not supporting it with the zero to seven vote at this point? Any thoughts or comments by anybody? Jason?
Uh, sure, I, I'm not sure. I, I mean, my kind of thoughts are mainly related to Article thirteen and Article fourteen, so. And, um, you know, from reading the other reports that, uh, Ways and Means have put out, and I've already publicly stated this, I have, you know. Disagreement with the metric that's used, which is primarily standardized testing and is Newa testing. Um, I'm not sure how in depth you want me to go as to why I disagree with that. I'm happy to do that now. I'm happy to do it deliberative.
No, I think, I think now is good because we'll, we'll be able to utilize some of this as we go through the budget presentation, uh, if we need it on Monday night through the deliberative session.
Yeah.
So I think any points that you want to share and certainly anything you have written up, you can send over as well for, um. Directly to me after, as we need to. And you can certainly share anything you have with the day as well if, uh, if needed.
Yeah, I don't have anything necessarily written up.
No, that's fine.
But, um, if I understand the reports, you know, this correctly and the reports, uh, the. Assessing the value of an Amherst education and then what, why ASD costs so high. Seems like the term educational outcomes is used a lot and the only metric that's tied to, and that I can tell is Newa testing and not even Newa testing in a way that would be appropriate. Um, so, to start, so obviously I have some material.
Um.
I'm excited.
Yeah, I'm glad you're excited. I think I'm being pretty calm.
She's excited about all of the books.
I guess. So the first, um, so this is all reputable material. So Diane Radic, she's the author of this book. She also was the former Assistant Secretary of Education under George H W Bush. And under President Clinton, she was on the governing, uh, education board. Uh, she's a Columbia University professor. She's. A well-respected educational historian. And here is in the introduction to the original edition of this, or not in this edition, um. This is how she describes, you know, putting too much emphasis on tests and tying that to teacher performance. She says. Teaching to test encourage dubious practices and artificially raise test scores. For instance, school systems can inflate tests by expelling low performers or refusing to enroll less promoting students. That's one, just example. There's more. Um, so again, in terms of just using testing. As the number one thing, she says, the problem of using tests to make important decisions about people's lives is that standardized tests are not precise instruments. She continues, the Committee on Appropriate Test Use of the National Research Council stated in an authoritative report in nineteen ninety nine, the tests are not perfect. And a test score is not an exact measure of a student's knowledge or skills. Because test scores are not an infallible measure, the committee warned. An educational decision that will have a major impact on a test taker should not be made solely or automatically on the basis of a single test score. There's more. I don't know how many of these you want me to read, um, but. That's my, my main issue is that it's using that is not a valid measure, so. There is talk in some of this other literature that I have about how do you use standardized test scores and what a standardized test really is. And how they're constructed. So ASCD, which is the Association for Supervision and Curriculum. They're an organization of educators, um. They publish books. In fact, the former Teacher of the Year in New Hampshire published a book through them, um. And basically, they go step by step as to how standardized tests are created and. Why they're made the way they are made. So a standardized test is meant to show differentiation between test takers. So what they do is they'll eliminate questions. So if eighty percent. Of students or eighty percent of test takers answer a question correctly, that question will be eliminated because it doesn't help differentiate the population. So what ends up happening with some of these tests is, is that. A skill that is viewed as important, most students are going to get correct. So when that skill is eliminated from actually being counted for. Because it doesn't help differentiate the population. So that's what, that's one issue with standardized testing. So really, if you want to use standardized tests as one, one data point, not the data point, but as one data point in a portfolio, you should be looking at growth data. How did students grow or not grow? And so when we look. At our growth data, our most recent insight report, which is publicly available on the SAU packet. Right? So our growth data. Every single grade with the exception of first was average or above average in growth. That's a better indicator than a single who was proficient, who wasn't proficient, because that's not necessarily a solid barometer. And there are all kinds of other factors that could play into it. So Kathleen Murphy has shared with us that some of the students took tests in a less than ideal environment. That impacts test results. That's a variable that it might not be the same across different districts. So, again, I could go on. I, I know we are, are hearts, you know, we have a hard stop, but. And then just, I guess, one last point, and then if you want me to go on, Tom, I will, if you want me to stop. Is the, the college readiness. Um.
Indicator.
Indicator or whatever. This is how Newa describes their college readiness indicator. Results in Table five of Thun and Mata, two thousand fifteen V indicated that elementary and high school students who performed at the sixtieth percentile or above on either map growth. Uh, map growth map or reading are generally on track in their preparation for college success by virtue of the fact that they are likely to obtain an ACT score. Of twenty-two or higher in high school. So that data point is solely saying that we think that we get twenty-two or higher on the ACTs. According to Forbes Magazine, it recently came out with an article. Eighty percent colleges and universities in the United States are no longer looking at standardized test scores for admissions. That means no SATs, no ACTs. So it's not even a measure that's being used. It's not being used by Harvard. It's not being used, it's not being used by any Ivy League school. It's not being, um. Used by other, you know, eighty percent. It's not being used by eighty percent of colleges or universities in the United States. So that's not really at this point. An indicator, just saying that they're going to get twenty-two or higher on a standardized test that, um. You know, what might be more helpful is, you know, what percentage of South Heagan High School graduates move on to a college? Or are on a career track or, or things like that? That would be more helpful. And then, I mean, Newa themselves. In terms of using their, their test as the sole barometer, they say. And admittedly, this is part of their also trying to sell you data coaching. Uh, Newa data coaching starts by helping you analyze a wide range of local data, including student records, examples of student work, and results from different types of assessments. Together, we'll hone your strengths and work to construct and implement data-driven educational plans. So even Newa is saying, our test alone is not what you should be using to make these decisions. Um, I'm assuming you'd like me to stop if you want me to go on about how.
Let me ask you a question then. So you're an educator. This is more out of your realm as a board member in terms of, um. It's not out of your realm. It's, it's a different contribution you can make. What is your experience in terms of. Educational value, educational outcomes, what other metrics are used besides test scores and from what you've seen?
Yeah.
And it may, whether it's tied back to, say, teacher compensation or not, what have, what is your experience with that?
Yeah, so the stuff that is good data, in my view, is hard to get, admittedly, hard to get, right? So, um, things that I've seen in the past. And again, hard to kind of disseminate to the public, but really good for the families in the school is we used to have portfolio nights. Right? So kids. Rapping whole schooling from K all the way through twelve are working on a portfolio. It gets honed every year. The parents come in. For a night and they get to see where their kid started, where their kid grew, um. And there's a port, we would have a portfolio day where that's what's all towards reviewing, pulling pieces out of the portfolio. So it's really tied in the benefit of that. It's tied to curriculum. It's, um. Again, hard to disseminate to the public, but I know it's South Heagan. I'm not sure if that's something that still happens, but that is definitely, yeah. It's something that has happened, but this was like, uh, from K through twelve type of a situation. Um, interestingly, I ran into Mike Berry on the way, uh, on the way in. And I'm, another nice data point would be is where after five years. After they leave us, five years after they leave us, where are they? Are they, did they complete college studies? Were they in a career or are they on the track that they want to be on? Because from my perspective, if the answer to that is positive, then the job is done. We did, we did, we did our duty regardless of the hurdles or bumps in the road that it took to get there, five years after they leave us. And I think that would be a great, like, uh, South Heaga, South Heagan data class.
We actually talked with, I guess I'm working with two classes, one on the start time and also one on a post-high school survey.
Yeah, so.
We've got the seventeen hundred members permission to survey the seventeen hundred members of the alumni on the Facebook page. So started that working a little bit busy this year, um, but after March fourteenth, we hope to start taking in and hopefully by the end of the year, we will have, because I agree with you, the. The, you know, as the, the, the post-high school. Success measured by becoming the best version of yourself and you having the ability to do your first choice, like Christine and I were talking this week. About first choices that, you know, that exists. And I've talked a couple of times in my world, we use data to create a sense of urgency. And the greatest, the, the sense of urgency exists in the SAU team as well as the building administration team. We are. Taking a, take a long, long hard look at math and this year we started our long hard look at reading literacy, so. But I get it. And I, I appreciate your points, Jason, very much.
Terry?
I don't want, I don't want to stop you if you're not done.
Oh, I mean, and I guess the last thing that I just don't understand from a philosophical perspective is if. And I'm not saying I hold this opinion because I don't, but if your opinion is that. The education is lacking, I don't understand how starving it would make it better. Terry?
Um, it's funny that, that you say that because I know that, uh, definitely. I try not to fall down the internet hole too often, but there's been a lot of conversation and I do try to kind of see what questions are coming up. And one, one comment I've seen over and over is it's like, if you, um, if you were sick and you went and they said, well. I don't want to treat you because you're sick, so when you're better come back and then I'll treat you. You know, that's, that's what taking, taking resources away. If you feel like there's a problem, taking resources away from it seems like the wrong way to address. So I think that there absolutely has been that public sentiment as well. Um, my question is more for, for Steve and Christine and Christine, I know you're kind of my queen of. Of interpreting results of things and I want to know, how do we use? Because I agree, I mean, I, um, was talking to a group just the other night. And, and I said, you know what? I was always a great test taker. I always, but I had no common sense. Because I would get like ninety-nine percent every year and it never occurred to me that someone did anything other than that. I was like, this is the dumbest waste of time ever. I always get the same score. And so, um. Because I just happen to be very good at that, whether I truly knew the material or not, I'm really good at narrowing down whatever. It's just a skill and then some kids don't have that skill and they get really upset and they. Um, I like the fact that I know that our grading has been, um. Sometimes it takes people to get their arms around, but for the kids, it takes some of that onus off of what was my grade and it's more about can I prove that I learned a concept? And it takes it away from just having that very quick and easy measure and it is harder. It's harder to be able to evaluate, but we do still use test in some ways. What do we use them for? And how are we measuring? Because that is the number one question I get is like, fine, you don't want to use standardized. What do you use them for? And then what do you use?
One of the reasons we moved to a standards-based grading system was that it would be another check on our system because. Every teacher has the same set of standards that's teaching that same course, same grade level. Um, you really can compare students across the entire grade by looking at, you know, the. Standard one or standard two, um, and how many students met that standard and how many are still working towards it. So, um, a lot of that work was, um. Happening pre-COVID, then COVID hit, so a lot got put on, on, uh, pause as far as using that as another indicator in our system, but I think it's something that. Uh, we, we should start looking at, um, you know, pulling out those scores because those are on, um, you know. Uh, those scores are teacher observation scores, their assessment scores, classroom tests, uh, science labs, all of those students are scored as to whether they're. Showing that they've met standard or not. So, um, you know, a quick NWEA test, that's, you know, an hour of a student's time, that's it. Um, and WEA is mostly multiple choice, which means you're getting a lower DOK. So the rigor of those questions are often, yeah, depth of knowledge, sorry, depth of knowledge. So the rigor.
Well, as we are second graders, we don't know it all.
Uh, the rigor always isn't as high as what you might experience in the classroom with like a science lab and needing to perform and explain and communicate and collaborate. So, um, I, uh, Steve and I have had a lot of conversations. I, I feel our community values looking at the whole child, but if we narrow everything down just to an NWEA score, we're not doing that. So how do we, um, broaden our lens a little bit and really truly go back to looking at that whole child? And I, I think one way certainly is looking at student assessment scores in class.
So, couple thoughts. I do know that over the years, as I, as I close in on this, the end of my second term and just signed up today for running for my third. That's, I have noticed some trends and, and one thing that I always appreciate when you come and present to us is that it's like, okay. Here is how to interpret and then here's areas where we know we need to take a look because it's an anomaly. You know, and we say, hmm, we, we were kind of expecting this, but we weren't expecting that. So then we dig deeper. And then we go, are we maybe, I know that at one time we had to change the order we were teaching things because it wasn't fair that we had, um. We were doing it in order that made sense to us, but then they weren't exposed to certain material that was going to be on the test. And so it wasn't teaching to the test per se. It was just rearranging to make sure they had some exposure before they took it. Um, and getting our timing a little more in line with their timing. And so we, we took away that and we've had areas where we said, okay, that's why we're looking at math deeper. Because we realized we weren't getting some of the results we wanted there. And so we wanted to go and work on that program. So. How do we use them to identify where we need to make adjustments? Because I feel like, to me, that's a valuable use of a tool as opposed to stack ranking. Stack ranking and, and grading, I was, um, when I learned more about grading and read the book that all the teachers were reading when we changed. It's, um, you used to sort kids, but so you said, these are the kids that get to keep going to school and these are the kids that go to the factory. These are the kids that have earned the ability to stay in school. Um, my, my nieces are in Germany. They do the same thing still. You get to earn the right to keep, to keep educating or you go and you learn a trade. Now for some kids, that's fine. That's the track they want to be on, but. For those who want to continue educating, I mean. Grades are used, what was his punitive, right? And so we want all of our learners to learn. And so for us instead, we use it not to exclude, but to say, where do we need to give more supports? And so tell me about how we use it in that way.
Yeah, um, and WEA is really meant to, um, really look to determine which students might need more support.
Yeah.
And often that's, uh, you know, how we're using it. We're also looking at, um, the question, you know, whether our students are making growth. So if we have a student who might be a really high-performing student, but isn't making the growth they need, we might not be meeting their needs. So how are we supporting that student and meeting their needs? So that's really, you know, especially in the classroom, how we're using. Those results. I look at big picture because I can see, um, big shifts or changes or holes, gaps. And it's usually often a curriculum or a resource issue. So I find it helpful, um, to be making adjustments to our system. So if we're seeing. All of a sudden, third, third grades, um, just making up a, a grade level, um, not referring to any data. Um, all of a sudden I see third grade scores are very different than what we've seen in previous years. Then we might want to dig into that and they're often talking with teachers, talking with building leaders. There's often a reason. Um, again, it could be a curriculum reason. It could be, uh, a, a social emotional, uh, challenge with that grade level. It could be, you know, a, a number of factors. So it's really looking at. Um, I think, you know, big shifts or changes in performance to help signal if there's, uh, you know, some, something we need to do. As a system, either curriculum instruction, um, you know, or, uh, and any other social emotional support could even be.
So what I, what I hear you saying, just to make sure I'm understanding, is that we use. We don't ignore the data. We use the, the data, but we simply don't structure everything toward, we use it along with a host of other data points. To say, how do we support our learners and how do we support our teachers? So that we make sure that they can support our learners. That's really how we use it. And so. It's not giving ourselves a grade per se. It's saying. How do we do, which is our number one goal of everything we do? How do we support our learners? Um, and I guess to your point, Jason, I really like that idea of like, I right now, I, it's my second year being on, um, student. Senior projects here and being on, on one of those teams and getting to work with those seniors and it's such a really cool way to see what they learned, to see how they apply it. And I used to love going when we would see all the books that all the grades did and I know that with COVID, we kind of. Pulled away from having the big public things together. You know, I would say doing something like that again, where we invite our parents in our community and to see some of the results of what the kids have, have done and learned. Because that's a pretty big deal to them. From our very youngest to our. To our older students, you know, being able to put together an entire story. And, and they have such a sense of accomplishment and that's such a great community. Ability to see some of the good work we're doing with them and let them be proud of. Um, invention conventions coming up. Um, I look forward to that every year and being a judge at that. So. I do think we have opportunities to kind of show off what we do and invite our community in to participate in seeing what's going on with our students. And helping to understand how we approach. So I think highlighting some of those, um, are real measures of things as well.
Now, um, one thing I'll say too is that COVID significantly impacted all students. And I think, uh, you know, looking at the past three years' worth of data, you're going to see significant COVID impacts. And I've started doing a little study. I know the board was interested in, um. What grade levels may have rebounded already and which are still struggling and, um, it's a different picture for every grade level. Um, as to what, where they are in their journey to kind of, uh, recovery. And I think that's a really important piece because, um, to draw any conclusions that were a failing school system based on our most recent data and those COVID impacts, I think is, um. Uh, you know, maybe a conclusion that, uh, looking at the big picture and a number of years' worth of data. Um, it, you know, and seeing that impact that, that provides that clearer picture.
And I think with that, Christine, it's probably two areas. I think we've seen it most. One is more, um. Uh, experiential, if you will, from, you know, anecdotal, the behavioral aspect of it, but I think the other part of it is the reading, which I think. The important thing in this budget is the focus on reading that you want to elaborate on that again, because I think. Couple of more reading specialists, additional library assistant in middle school and in, um, Clark Wilkins. That's going to be where we see the test scores maybe logging the most and, and where we certainly have a lot of work to make up because it's that building block.
Yeah, I really felt, um, that with the leadership team and with, with Kristen and Kathleen, that there was a focus in this budget. I know that there, there wasn't a long-term strategic plan per se, that's difficult with an interim, but. This, this budget and, and Amherst was not devoid of philosophy in movement and in, in areas. That we felt we needed it working with Christine, with everybody. So, uh, you know, in this budget, our, our two fellows. Um, you know, that, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars each will give us twenty-six hundred hours of certified teaching, work with kids in small groups. In both math and literacy through St. Ace. That's a very important piece that if this budget doesn't pass. Those opportunities will go to other districts who are waiting in line behind us for fellows with St. Ace. Um, you know, we have a library assistant trying to keep book access full-time at Clark, well, I'm sorry, Wilkins. Um, because right now it, it, it's a teaching assignment, so it's only open, you know, my, you know, actually right now we have a pilot of a part-time person working it, but. Um, having books access, accessible to students all day long in the classrooms is really important. Um, we have a, a additional class size, right? Uh, FTE. They're supporting our, the board's directive on class size, which will provide individual attention and assessment that we need. At the middle school, um, we have restructured some retiring and some resources to add another reading specialist or special education. We're going to look at, at the end of the year, but another person to work on those skills. So this budget did have philosophy, did have focus and did have the beginning of long-term plan as much as I could do. You know, with your cup of coffee as your interim, but with strong work with Kathleen, Kristen and Christine, I, I feel really good about. What's in this budget in a conservative way that supports a high need and high leverage part of our education, which is literacy. So the notion that it was devoid of planning or, or a vision or of large impact. Um, I'm not there. I think it was, um, uh, of a high impact in a planning and building in, in infrastructure. At the highest leverage piece that we have, which is literacy and that's coming from the math guys.
Is the, the fellows program with the St. Ace teachers, is that if, if that happens this year directly, it doesn't go to default budget for future years, but. I assume this is a program that. Gauging the effectiveness of it, we would want to be able to keep this going and we have that opportunity with St. Ace. It's not a one and done thing.
Correct, but it is a requirement for the, for the budget.
Correct.
And as soon as we know in March fourteenth, we will be, they're waiting to see it because some districts committed. Um, but we are, because of the relationship we have in history with St. Ace, we are the first choice. Um, so, and that's a March fourth, really March sixteenth, I think we will begin looking at the MOU even more. Uh, because and once it's, it's secured in that budget, we will begin this. And I think a twenty-six hundred hour certified teacher. Working with kids in small group is, is a tremendous asset for, for that value for those, for that. You know, I think I did, I think it's twenty dollars, you know, twenty-six hundred divided by fifty thousand, whoever wants to do that, there's about twenty bucks an hour, so. Um, it's initiative plus it's also going to build a pipeline that we've already seen for hiring newer teachers. In our new salary schedule. I mean, so it's all, all this is connected and I apologize for that.
Did I hear you say cheaper teachers, Steve? Is that what?
Early in experience, I would never say that. But we're attractive there. We're attractive with this experience. And we need these resources. Uh, not having a library, I'm a library person.
Yeah.
A library assistant will like all day long access for littles to books that they can take home and dig in books. Hardcore, you know, hard copy books. Uh, I really am. Uh, uh, it's one of the things Christine knows, but I found we didn't have that. It was a surprise for me. Because in all the community I live in, the community I used to work, that was never a question to have the library open full day, full time, all day long. And I think to Ways and Means credit, they supported that in our discussions. I really, I think they thought that was an excellent idea to include this budget. If my memory, I don't remember who was at that, but I think it was very well supported by Ways and Means, that new.
Um, so with that, I will, this is not, uh, an idea that I had solely by myself. Um, Victoria brought this idea up as well, but. And I didn't catch you up on this. Steve and I were talking today about deliberative session with Nate Jensen, just the order of things in, in the array. And one of the things that Steve and I discussed was, um, a, a bigger rubric, if you will, for. Educational outcomes. So aside from just test scores, developing this in the district and it's a perfect timing with a new superintendent starting, so. While we don't have a formal motion or anything, we won't talk about that tonight and won't put you on the spot for that. It is something that when Mike Berry start, I, I. Has he accepted it? Has he, um, the contract?
I don't believe it is. Okay.
I don't. So if Mike Berry starts for us on July first, um. That will be something that we can work with, with this board and with Steve and probably do some of the groundwork beforehand, laying out what our priorities are, what are those other metrics? I know it's been mentioned by, um, Mike and Killian had mentioned it, that other districts do have other metrics that they're using, so. Making sure that we're, you know, similar, finding out what metrics work and, and what don't, what, what doesn't, what metrics, what metrics don't work. Um, sorry, it didn't sound right when I said it. So.
Just defining what.
Define the, the, yeah, exactly. So just basically define what we use, but also just establishing that so we can use that as further backup. Yeah, exactly. So just basically define what we use, but also just establishing that so we can use that as further backup for future budgets, saying. This is how we're tracking it beyond just test scores too. So um obviously some will have data, some will have, will be more of that anecdotal at that point. But I think that's inevitable. It's part of the whole picture. So um anything from you, Josh, on on the budget?
Yes, specifically. So one of the things on Article thirteen, one of the points that is made is about unrestricted fund balance and and. Why it is at eight hundred thousand currently, which is about two point five percent of our budget overall. So I was hoping, you know, Amy maybe would be the best person to speak a little bit to, you know, how school budgets are hard capped, right? We can't spend a penny more than than we budget, how we're forecasting out, we get revenue in and sort of where that leads us. And why, in my view, when if we're landing at two point five percent of a of a thirty one million dollar budget, we're sort of doing a pretty good job. In my view, because if you're budgeting for your groceries and that's a, you know, you expect to spend a hundred dollars a week. Um but you wouldn't, but you knew you were hard capped, right? And so if you get to the grocery store and you spent ninety eight dollars and you want to buy eggs and it's, you know, another fifteen dollars to buy eggs. You might wanna, you know, plan accordingly to make sure that you have a little wiggle room there. And then you're not doing a bad job budgeting if you only spend, if you budget, you know, a hundred and only spend ninety seven dollars and fifty cents, right? And so speaking a little to how that works in our system.
Yeah, so that um seven seventy five is an estimate in unassigned fund balance. Um and it's not unencumbered funds, as I think was reported in the Ways and Means report. Um it's it's truly an estimate of what we expect to have at the end of the year in both. Unanticipated revenue and expense. So it's not just the expense of the budget. It's um it's revenue that can come in. So for example, um we learned recently that. We received additional um special ed revenue that has come in. Um it's about a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars that is coming in that was not expected. So at some point in the spring, we'll have a public hearing to accept all unanticipated revenue. Um we spoke about that last year as being a practice going forward. So it's, that's one item um that is not something that was budgeted. Um but it will show up as unanticipated revenue. So yes, we're we're doing our budget. Um we start in the summer and end up. You know, in January for the following year. So um and we're gathering information from all of the different SAU. Uh department heads from school buildings and everyone's doing their very best to look at what our projected costs will be for the following year. Um other things that change is the guaranteed maximum rate for health insurance. We receive that, uh but we don't actually know what that will be until after the um budget. I think we get that in April, I believe. Um so we could end up with, as last year, what happened was. We ended up with additional um funds from that as well. So it it's not that we are um bringing forth budgets to the board. That are where there's added funds. We are trying to make this obviously as lean as possible. Um all of the department heads and uh building administrators and the superintendent, everybody works very hard to bring forth. The 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 leanest possible budget to produce the best possible outcomes. Um so. Uh that's how the, that's how we estimate that unanticipated revenue. And as you know, as we get closer to the end of the year, we have better numbers because we have a better idea of. Um particularly how special ed is gonna be funded. We also have um there's rev, there's. There's expenses that are required contractually to be budgeted. Uh for instance, uh professional development. Um there's other items that are in the contract that we need to budget for. That may not be spent because folks decide not to use, say, their professional development. So those are also funds that show up as unassigned fund balance. And and then, as I started to say, you'll start to see those reports um in more detail um this spring. And that's when the board can make the decision to um do any end of year projects. Using just the expenses, not the revenue. The revenue is not allowed to be spent by the board prior to the end of the year. Those those revenues go back to um to offset the tax rate. The following year. But any, any funds that are left. And we have that one one Warren article for the capital needs for six hundred and five. On July one, the revenue then becomes available to fund that one article. So the revenue and the expenses are available um to fund that one article.
I I it's probably not a good apples to apples comparison because of S R funds the last couple of years with the COVID stuff. But do we know roughly what the six fifty that we put in last year, how much of that was generated from revenue? And how much of that was um truly unexpended budgeted funds that were just left over?
I can look that up for you.
Yeah, yeah. I know, again, last year, the last three years may not be great examples of that, but maybe historically what that trend is, I think one year we had one point seven left over. So probably that was, I think that was twenty twenty, the COVID year.
And the GMR definitely has an impact on that. Um we also also have HRA funds that are um. That we contribute to and they may not be expended um by folks. So that's something that we can't predict. We can't, we don't know how often our people are gonna go to the doctor. So um you know, so there's some unpredictability in that. So when we estimate, we try to strike that balance between being um conservative and not overstating. Cause if we overstate, then that's more revenue and it shows a lower tax rate. So that's not really fair. So we try to strike that balance between not being too conservative, but not saying we're not gonna have anything either. So.
Well, I think, I think with with that, in terms of conservative too, we're budgeting for staff. So roughly six teachers a year retire between Article fourteen four and Article fourteen five. And eventually that will be weaned out because it's uh teachers that have been hired since eighteen, twenty eighteen.
Uh yeah, the first year.
Have been working on the four oh one three B, so four or three B, excuse me. So with those teachers that are retiring under those contracts, their final year salary gets bumped up quite a bit. So we're budgeting that in there. So those and plus whatever other payouts that they're getting.
Yep.
But when we're budgeting for replacement teachers, it's master seven is what we're planning. So roughly, say, it's seventy five thousand.
Yep.
If we're hiring a teacher at forty five thousand or forty one thousand in step one.
Yeah.
That's where we're gonna see, you know, potentially upwards, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars with the difference in new teachers and retiring teachers.
You have to be a little careful in looking at um health benefits because some of the folks retiring may have a single or a two person and uh and we're gonna budget for a family. For.
Yeah.
For that.
So but but that's where some of this unexpected, I would imagine that's probably where a good chunk of it comes from every year is is just the difference in what we're hiring for. Um replacement teachers and teachers that are retiring.
And this, you know, this being my second year, I'm I'm getting better at doing those projections with with my budget director. And um hope to have like some more detailed analysis when when we come in in April to to give you those reports. So. Anything to add?
I think you did really well.
Okay.
The only, the only other piece that Amy and I've talked about is is working. Uh so as part of audits, some audits produce an analysis for you. An audited analysis on the reserve fund bounce unencumbered funds. And I think so will, Amy and I will probably meet with the auditor free and talk about that report. Digging in and understanding where the unreserved fund balance is coming from is important. Um but it also is important, but it it's not great if if we decided to in the last three months to spend everything we possibly could spend it down. Right? It shows that that, you know, we're just, we don't have spending spread at the end of the year. We understand that, we believe that. So I know, I think you covered it all. There's some great things that like an H R A will reduce your expense and increase your revenue. Um in the contract, we added more professional development, which is very important. Um but as Amy just said, if people don't use that, we think we will, um that would impact your fund balance as well. Cause there are contractual obligations that we have to regardless of use. But I think you did really well. But I think this board, this community. Like having us take a look at understanding them reserve fund, but how much is revenue, how much is expenses, what lines they are? And next year we develop the budget and build it, we'll see. Because we do talk a lot about not just what you're thinking has been, what was actually spent, but there's room here to look, but we're not in a crisis. And we're honest and we're returning money that we're not using. Um I think those are good signs of a healthy organization, but most most communities, Josh, to your point, you don't go to zero. Um you have some kind of buffer because you just don't know, you know, remember you start a budget, this place starts a budget in September. You're spending up to June of the next year. You're budgeting so far in exa- in advance. Some of our district, we start, we started in October and hop, you know, we started in September, actually in the summer, no, in the spring.
Spring.
Spring, I'm sorry, the the bill teachers do it so far in advance, almost two years. Almost two years before the last dollar of that budget is spent with me. So yeah, I think you have to expect some. And I think we're in the right place, but there's more learning, there's more digging in to do and unpacking it. Sure.
Yep, um when we talk about the A E A or staff pay related to um test performance and student performance. Um during our negotiations last year, I I, if I'm remembering correctly, I think there was only one comparable district in New Hampshire. Um who had any type of um performance pay. And I think that was something that we discussed. Um that Tom and I discussed as we were going into negotiations of, you know, what are some options? Is this, is this even um a question? And it it really wasn't something or isn't something that is uh widely used, I think, in the education world. At least in public schools in New Hampshire that we consider comparable to ourselves. Um the other thing I just wanted to mention, during our curriculum meeting for the budget subcommittee. Um we talked a lot about the math curriculum, the new bridges curriculum. Um and it was um it was stated that the goal of the A S P is to see improved scores. On both statewide assessments and classroom assessments using the new bridges math curriculum. So I do think it's um something important to note that we are using that curriculum literally to educate our students in a better way.
The um so and I'm talking about this, so there's, you can measure inputs and outputs. Like last year in one of the districts in this, uh there was lots of discussion about. Um leadership versus coach versus that. And one of the things that I, last year I proffered. I would love to see an increase in evidence, research basis, structural practices or. I, that would make me about, as Christine, that would make me as happy as I could. That's an input. So and you can walk into a classroom. And you can assess whether or not they're using a research and evidence based practice. So we last year, you know. Is it possible to, and this is, there is one school district that hires. Uh spends over a hundred thousand dollars hiring three former principals or superintendents to a neutral third party to evaluate instructors on their teaching. And they rate them and based on their rating, they get a percent of their salary increase. So they give up, they, those teachers get a base increase and then there is a merit based on their input. This is not student test score. This is their performance in the classroom because that's a teacher very direct, that teacher's responsible. Test scores, there's a million things like testing conditions and do they have lunch that day, but what they did. And so that is the input. And there is a school district, one of my former colleagues is doing that this year. He retired last year from the principal and in the community that I worked in, he is now paid to evaluate and assign a rating. That will be connected to those teachers' salary, total input. That's the only place that I know right now that is doing something and it's it's not much money. You know, it's 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 and it's not all of their increase, by the way. It's a portion of, they have a base increase, so you get a little bit more for their instruction. Um in some studies, and this, I get into this years ago, I haven't done it soon, there was a study, but what would it take to change performance? And it wasn't five hundred to a thousand dollars, was not gonna move a teacher. It was literally five figures. If if teachers had the opportunity to get a merit increase of ten thousand dollars, you might see some. And I don't know of any, and actually someone out there might do this, where a school district with a new merit based program pay. Actually increased to cheap. To that.
So that was uh yes and no. So there was a meta-analysis done of, I think approximately thirty five different studies on student achievement and linking it to. Um merit pay for teachers. And basically, so I'm really summarizing here. What they found is that only the things that are incentivized will increase and everything else will kind of fall by the wayside. So that was one finding. Um and the other finding is was yes, test scores, test scores will get a bump. But A, again, everything else will go by the wayside, everything else you feel important. And and B, it's only temporary.
Gotcha. I'm just, Arizona did some stuff. I think there was some stuff in Arizona, if that sounds familiar to you.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Like I said, this was a meta-analysis, so it looked like uh twenty six of the studies were done in the United States. Uh nine of the studies were done internationally to look at. Di- different countries. Um and just summarize basically, and those will be extrapolated points that I've never been up the top of my head. I could, if people need that citation, I can find it. Thanks.
Tom, I actually have that information that you're looking for.
Yeah.
So um three hundred and two thousand seven fifty two was the savings and expenditures.
From last year.
Yeah.
So that six fifty was three or two.
Yeah, there was actually uh one point two million total. And nine twenty nine, five forty was revenues, three oh two, seven fifty two was expenditures. Six fifty was funded the um. The Warren article and five eighty two, two ninety two went back to the tax cars to offset the tax rate.
So six fifty and then five eighty two, and there's roughly one point two million, you said, one point two three?
Yeah, so the only three hundred thousand.
Less than one percent.
That's pretty tight for me.
We did freeze the budget for a while because we worried.
Because you knew that you were that close.
We knew that we were that close. Yeah.
Makes me nervous.
Yeah.
So thanks for, that's great, good question.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um and nine twenty nine in revenue was artificially high because of the federal lunch program too, correct?
Yeah, and some other things, and I can dig into that too and get some more specifics.
But don't aim for anything.
Okay.
This week, the the overall number's fine, but just remembering back, last two years, we've had the federal lunch money, right?
Yeah, and we and we had um, we had a big chunk come back in Health Trust.
Yeah.
G M R.
That's right.
There was a lot.
Um, any other comments, Josh, that you had on the budget?
I'm not, yes, Tom.
Anybody other with comments on the teaching contract, thoughts on that?
I mean, I guess just to kind of bolster my other point, uh you know, by holding teachers accountable only for test scores and reading mathematics. Schools pay less attention to students' health, physical education, civic knowledge, the arts and the enrichment activities. When faced with demands to satisfy a single measure, people strive to satisfy that measure, but neglect the other, perhaps more important goals for the organization.
Um just in terms of, you know, I can speak for Josh and I, and Josh, feel free to add any color you want as well. Um. Negotiations were tense at times, I think. It was, you know, I think there was. Um some feedback from from voting day last year. And obviously there was feedback to make sure that we we fixed the salary scale that was really busted. And this went back four, five, six years now, whenever the last contract was.
Right.
Negotiated with two years of missed contracts. And and that's really the danger now. Is if that happens, we're looking at two years of the contract and it's going to inevitably, and I'll talk about this on on Monday night when we have our deliberative. Um going through this section, what the consequences are of this, but two years of the contract, we start to become less attractive to younger teachers. We can't be more competitive on the initial side of it by raising that initial salary. Um but if you look at our our upper end, yes, it's comparable to some of these other districts, but it's because of that jump step. It goes from eighty two to eighty nine in that last year. That's a big increase. Eighty two is a little more um in line with where we are maybe. In terms of size of districts and and some of the comps. Um you know, Hanover is a bit of a different bird because it's a very wealthy enclave community that has incredibly high taxes. Um that's why Lebanon's getting overpopulated and field and all that, but I digress. Um so with that, I think that, you know, having that jump step removed, we're not gonna go backwards. We're we're not gonna go from eighty nine to eighty two again for that top step. It's just, I mean, I think we all understand it's not the way it works. And yeah, we can play hardball and not and say, we're not doing this, we're not doing this, we're not doing this. Um but then where does that leave us? You know, at that point, we're cutting off our noses despite our face. So I think to to highlight this on Monday again, that's my big concern is that we're gonna have some real consequences if we don't. Um if we don't get this passed, so.
Well, and I would say, Tom, I think, you know, what I appreciated largely through Steve's and yours and Amy's leadership was. There was a vision, like we had goals that we set out, we said, here's what things that we wanted to do based on feedback we had received after last year's failed. And that included, like you talked about the jump steps and some of those things, and we fixed those problems. And while we were fixing those problems, we also got more student time, we got more training time, uh we did some really good things in this contract. Um and I think it's a huge step forward um for our community, for our teachers and for our students. And I think it puts us in a good place, much better place the next time we have to do this, because we aren't. Because we aren't fixing all the problems that we have. You have to, in order to move forward, we had to fix those problems, right? And that wasn't going to come with us just snapping our fingers. And like you said, I think, like, I, I would say that. Negotiations were, you know, negotiations, they're, they're how they're supposed to be, and nobody came out feeling a hundred percent great about everything. But everybody felt like we got to a good place where we, we found common grounds on some of the things that everybody wanted to do, and then everybody got to pee somewhere else. So I, I feel really good about, um, the whole, the whole, uh. Process that was used and where we landed. And I think you're right, it's important to get this done because it puts us in a better position.
Sure. So I think one consequence that also needs to be mentioned is that I know that when I came in, we'd gone two years without. A contract, and then you had to start doing catch-up. So then not only did you have any increases, but that's where we got some of that crazy stuff in there began with. Because we were catching people up and then it never kind of went away. And so I think that it just gets more expensive the more you put it off. And it's demoralizing to our current staff, they definitely felt very, um. And continue to feel de- demoralized by the fact that they felt rejected by the community. When it was, it was a fair contract last year, in our opinions and theirs. And it's a little different this year, and we did address some things we wanted to address, but I think that. If you just want to get down to brass tacks. The longer you go without, the more it's going to cost us, because then we will have to make those kinds of concessions. And we will have to catch them up from having years without a contract.
And years without a raise.
And you're, and that's why you're catching up, you're catching up on, on the raises.
I mean, the simplest thing, if you're a teacher that's in your third year next year and you're still at forty-one thousand seven one seven. So no raise at all in that time, you're on step three. And we're going to hire somebody on step one for next year, they're going to be at the same step, the same salary with you, and you might have. Um, two years of experience, let alone whatever degrees you might have, uh, at that comparable level, um. That's probably, um, you know, uh, this, this, Jason, you can speak to this, but from my vantage point, um. This is not as market-driven as other jobs are. Or if you work for a, one company and company B is going to pay you ten grand more, you're going to go there, there are a lot of different factors that go into it. Um, a lot of things that are the same, so you could move around like that, but. At this point, that becomes market-generated when Hollis is going to go to forty-seven in the first year of their contract, forty-eight, I think it is. Um, it's a big difference if you can be a first-year teacher or a third-year teacher and potentially go up ten grand from. Being third-year here stuck on one step for three years in a row compared to what you could get at the next one.
Are you saying they're human?
Yeah. But I don't think that, you know, it doesn't affect the more veteran teachers, they're not, they're a little more insulated in that because they're at the upper end of their, um.
Yeah.
I don't say earning potential because it never ends, but.
And veteran teachers usually more, in my experience, more apt to stick around and more. More embedded, it's. It's what you know, you're more invested in the community at that point, um, you know, in the district. This is not a problem, it's solely an SAU thirty-nine problem, an Amherst problem, or an AEA problem. Um, lots of young staff in the past couple of years have moved around. Due to this, uh, I've seen it. And it's hard to retain young staff, and so, right, if our contract doesn't pass. In reality, you're potentially looking at a more expensive. Uh, teacher salary, because you're not going to be able to hold on to the young folks, they're going to leave.
And Steve, I think about fifty percent of our Amherst teaching staff is within years one to five.
Well. Of experience here, not necessarily experienced them, but.
Yes.
The, um, you know, Christie and I both took the same course at UNH. And I, I mentioned this at one of the subcommittee meetings, and, and this is, I can, and I can do this in the summer project. There is, right, one of, one of the guiding principles is comparison for us to other districts and certainly. And taking a look at the top salary to the top salary is not necessarily a great analysis. Of whether or not ours is, is more lucrative than theirs. And how you do it is you take a BA one teacher. At Hollis Brookline and BA one teacher in Amherst. And you march them through a thirty-year career in each salary schedule. So af- after six years in, in Amherst, you go to masters, it's six years in Hollis Brookline, you go to masters. Like, for example, as Tom said, Hollis Brookline starts at forty-five, we start at forty-one, in the first five years, they make a lot more money there. And then you go, and then when does longevity? And what is long? Longevity is a component that is very different and very highly variable in contracts. For example, the district I worked in, there were teachers making eight thousand five hundred dollars in longevity. It wasn't in the salary schedule, you didn't know unless you looked into the contract. But when we did the analysis, you said, okay, after fifteen years, you get longevity of eighty-five hundred. In, in Hollis Brookline, they may get a three percent. And then you march them, then you actually march them through retirement. Like, um, there's actually, I looked, and I, over the weekend when I was digging in. One of the neighboring districts, it, it says there's, there's two, it, it only says the number of twenty-five thousand, but you get it twice. So their retirement is fifty thousand dollars, but if you just look quickly, it looks like twenty-five, so that fifty thousand. One of our neighboring districts is actually more than the retirement.
It makes me feel better to know that.
And, and I was, so I'd actually reread it, and I, we, we read it and said, because I didn't know that, so. Because if you just look top, top, there's a difference, but it's the journey, because many teachers, not all teachers, but many teachers do. The twenty or thirty-year here. I mean, not all, but it, that's, that journey is how you look to see and. And, 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 uh, um, my first year is that we did the stream of earnings analysis about seven districts in the first negotiations. And Amy and I can work on that. I like, that's good work. But it's not just to look at masters fifteen to masters fifteen, you really have to take them through the journey, including longevity and including. Um, retirement. And then you can see how, on, if it is balanced or unbalanced, because I, I, I agree with Tom, at the top end, we're a little unbalanced. But we're not the bottom end, and the entire life of thirty years here with longevity and retirement, we may not be as unbalanced. As one would look is just a strictly glance at a salary schedule. Does that make sense? So that's another project ahead.
Uh, I'm looking at it now, just so you all have the numbers, if you're in. Next year, if this, if this contract doesn't pass, you're the year three bachelor one, just to use the bachelor step. Forty-one, seven, one, seven, I know this goes against what you were saying, but just to illustrate it.
Yeah.
Forty-one, seven, one, seven, uh, first year in Hollis Brookline, uh, I'm sorry, in Hollis Brookline. Next year, you would start at forty-eight, two, twenty-two, and if you were in step three, you'd make fifty-one thousand. So it's ten thousand and two hundred dollars that you could go. Now again, is there a position in Holland's? Maybe not, but odds are, most school districts have. But just openings available just from retirements every year.
Two years in Amherst eighty-two thousand, two years there ninety-six thousand. You've already, they've already made fourteen thousand dollars more in two years. Now to extrapolate that through, I mean, I'm, you're doing exactly what I, now you extrapolate that through twenty. And that's how you can tell how much is, i- i- I'm not saying we might not be, but I don't know, I haven't done the stream of earnings, we were kind of busy, skating in. Um, but just by the two years, and it doesn't miss, you know what I mean, it's ninety-six to eighty-two.
You're earning that early part of your life, you're investing it.
There's going to blow all the money anyway, so.
Maybe we shouldn't give them so much, so it, it takes a little bit deeper to look, and, and, and I understand how. The need to compare, but I think you got to look not just at a glance, but digging. And digging in is a scream of earnings, based on how Christine and I were both trained on how to, and, and do an analysis of value of contract.
And I think I've under, underrated this, getting into these negotiations tiers in a row, being so focused on numbers, but. Having many conver, we had a lot of conversations about this, but sure, overall morale too, I think I underestimate that, so I think that that's a. Um, you guys obviously have a better, you're, you're more on social media and, um, with that, but. That does play a factor.
Just talking to our teachers, they, um. It was a gut punch last year. And. They haven't forgotten it. And it's, it breaks my heart. And it makes me feel like I know how hard they work, I know what they do, and. And we just have to do everything we can to fight for them, because that's our job, right? It's our job to take care of our staff and take care of our kids, and. We have a fair negotiation, nobody, like you say, nobody walked away entirely happy, but it was fair. And we need to fight for it and really show that it makes sense, it makes sense for our taxpayers too. You want teachers that, that feel appreciated and feel happy to be there. Because it's a hard job, and we are still losing educators across the country at a record rate.
Yep.
And we still have open, open racks that we haven't been able to fill for Paris and other things. So if we want to make sure that we can, is one of our top priorities, right, is to. Attract and retain.
You got it.
Quality educators, and we need to make sure we're doing all we can to do that.
That's the more important that happens in the.
It's just a building until you add people.
Any other thoughts on thirteen or fourteen that we want to incorporate? Into Monday's presentation? Any overall thoughts from public hearing? I know Victoria sent those over to me, um. Send over just a couple of comments, just from some specificity things, you know, how many times we've actually contributed to the capital reserve fund. This will be our fourth year in a row doing it, so, um. Just some of those items, but anything else that you guys have, if you have, you know, notes from public hearing, you want to send them over, send them my way, and I'll incorporate those into Monday. Um, Terry, we mentioned this earlier, I shared the Ways and Means draft report with everybody. Um, I shared another version of it tonight where we have our collective comments on that, so if you just want to add your comments or email your comments on that report, if you have any. Um, I want to make sure we get that back to Ways and Means for the facility and then for the SAU as well, so. Any of those reports that they shared yesterday, uh, I don't want to, I don't want to. Out of respect for those guys, because the report's not public yet, so I don't want to, um. Put it all out there, any, any changes we have, because I want to give them chances to make any edits or, um, look at the recommendations we have. Before we post that, or before they post that.
I think, I remember I did get, I did get it and start to look through it, but.
Yeah, just.
I haven't, I haven't seen the annotated version yet.
That's why I'm, I'm not, we're not going to cover that report tonight, just because it's not, not a public report yet, so.
Thank you.
Can I ask about, if you're, when you're ready to move on from thirteen?
Just going to say, next item.
Okay, so I, I wanted to, if it's okay with you, if we can bundle fifteen and seventeen together, those are the special one-time meetings. Um, I don't know if that's something that one of our administrators wants to talk about, why it's on there and, and how that works.
One of them is contractually obligated.
Which we found out after we.
Yes.
Accidentally, didn't.
So I, I can, I can fill in, we, we had this discussion last year that. Um, what we took as a, a no means no situation, we didn't realize it was obligated, so we had, uh. A non-meeting to discuss that, um, as it came to our attention in January after public hearing. That was before deliberative, right?
I don't remember the timing.
Yeah, I, I, it's, it was in January or February, so we had a non-meeting to just quickly discuss that with. Did we want to put a trailer article on there? And come to find out, it was in the AEA contract. Um, that it had to be on there, so if it failed and, and it's not common, it's, it's practice, it's not. Uh, unanimous, I looked at other districts last year that had it, some did, some didn't. So there were, uh, I think Litchfield didn't have it, where there was no trailer article, so if the, A, the CBA failed, it was just. You back the status quo and they'd work on a new one this year. Uh, I think it was Litchfield, but, um, ours is mandatory to, to put on there. Um, but it gives the board the option of posting that additional meeting, which obviously incorporates costs, incorporates time. Uh, and then incorporates a, a different potential strategy, we, you know, how much do we change? Do we try to get a one-year gap? Do we try to? Um, squeeze other stuff in there, but it's a potential thing that we can look at if it fails, and then that article has to pass too, so fourteen fails and fifteen passes, we have that option. They both fail, obviously, we, we don't have the option, so, anything you want to add to that?
No, it's just interesting, um, central New Hampshire, this was never a thing, they always put it on there because boards want choices and it saves costs. You don't have to go to Superior Court and spend money to do get special meeting and see if you want, you just, uh, you get permission from the body. But to be honest, I was an annual meeting superintendent. So we knew right then, at the moment, if the contract failed, then you went to the trailer article and it passed, it wasn't, you know, the ballot. Um, but I think it is a good, a, always a good idea to give boards choices that you don't have to, you know, that are cost efficient, but. Um, it's a very, uh, in the communities, in, in central New Hampshire. They frowned on having special meetings. We said no in March, now you're trying to slide one in. So if, if anything like that happened, we'd have serious conversations about it. Because, um, some communities don't work smart, like, we tried, my first year as superintendent, we tried a special meeting. Was excited, my first negotiation, put all this fun stuff in. And almost zero support because it was special. We told you no in March. Don't try and do this now. And it was very loud and clear. And it was, uh, a lot of work. That was not well-received by the community, because they felt they told us in March, when everybody votes, why are we doing this again? But I'm glad it's there, because options are good.
ASSA, that's not contract. Yeah.
Well, if you do it for the one, it would.
Correct it, and that's, and that's why we did that in areas, so if that were to happen, if fourteen or sixteen fail and fifteen, seventeen pass. That'll be one of the first things we discuss in our March meeting with whomever's on the board, uh, three of us will be here, and then. Uh, Josh and Terry, depending on how things go, um. You know, we'll have to have those conversations about, do we have that special meeting, and then when do we try to do that? Try to do it early so we can give more time for planning, or do we want to try to do it, i- is it going to take time to be able to do that? So, but we'll sit down with the board and then we'll go to, uh, the AEA and their negotiating committee as well to have those conversations, so.
I just wish that we would mention the fact that the reason we didn't. Last year was because we believe strongly in it, and we really wanted to show our support for. And not give ourselves the escape clause, right, that, that this is, this is the contract we're bringing, and we feel it's a fair one to bring, and we support our teachers. It was meant as a show of support, not a disrespect, and I think that unfortunately, it was seen by our teachers as, as a form of. Disrespect that we didn't give that option, and so we have been apologizing, um, and, and rightfully so, if that's how they perceived it. The whole year, but it really, our, our thoughts were, knowing our community and how they responded to some other things, we thought they would be, um. Upset, just like your community was to say, we just told you no, why are you asking me again? It's like, mom said, no, go ask dad, you know, we didn't want to feel like we were playing a game there, so we said, no, we throw our support behind this and we support them. And we think you should support it too, so, um. I, I just want to be on the record, uh, that was absolutely our, our thinking, and, and we were. We were really upset after when we felt like that's how they perceived, that it was a lack of support, where absolutely. Our intent was that it was a show of support.
Okay. Anything else, uh, in terms of the articles, the capital reserve fund is pretty, pretty standard, I think these are big capital projects, and it allows us to have that rainy day fund. If we, if we have money in there, um, and this is an important aspect for us regardless of what happens at Clark Wilkins, to be able to fund some of these long-term projects. Without, um. You know, without the inconsistent tax rate of adding, you know, two million to a budget. One year and then nothing the next year for facilities, if there is a, a major roof project, but it also gives us that emergency cushion. And then allows us to plan out some of these items too, so it's not additional, um. Tax impact on the, on the year, so I know that in twenty-six, is it twenty-four, FY twenty-four, we have the roof project. Which would probably be a two-year project, correct? Phase, excuse me, you know, and then in twenty-six, a ton of miscellaneous projects that if they all. Come do at that point, it's another, um, seven-figure spend that we'll have in FY twenty-six, so. Um, valuable to have that fund, but it's probably the most sensible and. Efficient way to try to be able to fund that without putting those in the budget on a yearly basis. So.
And just a little more information on the, um. The study that's being done, uh, for the, for the roof, um, and the unit ventilators, so the, so. Um. For the roof, the, the plan is to have that a phased project. Um, and a lot of the work that is being done is because. The different sections of the roof have different depths of insulation. So because of that, we need to figure out which areas have that different depth. And make a plan on, um, that, that will help determine the cost. Um, and it will also help determine the phasing. So that's the work that's being done right now, um, as part of that study.
Now, will that be, as part of that, will it be, um, is it even possible to do it where you can make it a uni- uh, unilateral depth? Is it, is it possible to even it out, or is. Different roof, a different type of construction, so it has to be eight inches of insulation or whatever.
Now you're above my. Um, I, I got as much information from Roger to. Yeah, exactly, Roger, so I do know that there are different levels, which is, makes it more complicated. And I know folks are like, well, why can't they just fix the roof? Um, we don't actually know how much it is going to cost for each of these sections. And then once we have that information, then we'll be able to phase it appropriately. Based on the funds that we have and the funds that we will need to be, um, expecting from this year, so.
My high school was a big square. It's the best design ever, and I'm back on our big rectangle, I should say, one long, big flat roof.
We have the annex that was put on at the, um, the middle school, so there's different areas, so.
The water type is the priority at Amherst Middle School. Um, we, we talked about that pretty early, fall, that this is, and, but it's not a patch, it's not the seal stuff you see on TV. This is a significant project that's going to take over time. But we're doing the, this is the priority, that we, we, we really, nobody likes it, we hate it, I hate that we have to worry about leaks. Um, and it is coming, and I think we're going to have information at the next board meeting. About different, and, and, and the subcommittee building the grounds, has done some work on heating ventilators, there's different options there. So behind the scenes, there is significant work being done. With the goal as soon as possible to make that place watertight, watertight roof. With the goal as soon as possible to make that place watertight, watertight roof. And then also, like, for example, a time we didn't talk about this, but this weekend. Because of the cold, we have people walking every aspect of our schools in Amherst visually. Going in to see, not every hour, but we're not, we're not going to wait forty eight hours to see if there's a leak on Monday. Um, so we have, um, people going to lay eyes on every unit ventilator. In the Amherst Middle School. Numerous times on Saturday and Sunday. Um, I just mean, we'll catch it immediately. But it's not going to, Kristen's not going to walk in Monday morning with a heating ventilator popped.
Thank you.
And not this all weekend, I mean, we're, you know, we're not sleeping there, but, um, but we are. Taking additional precautions because we know it's su- right, super cold.
Yeah.
And with with Amy's work with Roger, we have some people on hand for community events, and while they're there, they're not going to be sitting in the gym. They're going to be walking and laying eyes on every unit ventilator numerous times over this weekend.
So, yeah, I just, I do have some information on this weekend, because I know it's a big, it's a big deal, so. On in preparation of the cold weather, Roger has communicated with his staff that interior classroom doors, vestibule doors. Boiler room doors, water room doors, sprinkler room doors shall be kept open for supplemental heat. faucets in the Wilkins portables will be kept at a minimum grip, oc- occupied times for heating has been extended into Sunday. And the buildings will be checked during the weekend, and any issues will be reported. Um, to the facilities leads, so we do have staff, um, it works out well, we have basketball going on in school this weekend, so we have staff, um. There in any event, so.
So we're on it the best we can be. But we, yeah, someday we would like to not have to worry about that, but that's okay, we're going to worry about it for a while.
Just something that I just want to comment on, um. Something that I I read in the ways and means report, or the, not the report, the ways and means, um, response for article eighteen was that.
Voters guide.
The voters guide, thank you, um, was that they're upset that A S D buildings have been allowed to fall into such disrepair, and I just wanted to comment. Um, uh, when it comes to the roof, and we're talking about that, that roof leak and and all that, um. That roof is the original roof, it's nearly fifty years old. So for a roof to last fifty, nearly fifty years, it it has been taken care of over time. Um, it is just literally at the end of its usable life, you can only extend something so far. Um, and I just think that's important to note that.
Part of this though is. There are leaks in the new roof as well, though.
So, so no, I I touched base with Roger today to further understand that, so the new, the new wing, which is not actually new anymore. Um, but the wing that has our science classrooms, um, has had water damage from the unit ventilators. That's where we've had our water damage there, there have been minimal small leaks. That are, um, related to the flashing. And from what I understand from Roger, again, this is not my, my wheelhouse, but from what I understand, the flashing is what goes over. The uh, the edge, the corner of the roof, and so when that is pushed away, you know. I don't know, for whatever reason, wind or weather, ice, all those different things, that can get pushed away and just need to be re- reattached, so it's not that the membrane. Is leaking in that situation, it's that we've had like, small flashing type of issues, which is a much smaller roof concern than what we're talking about for the original roof.
Right.
But we we did have that notion, I thought maybe they missed, maybe I misspoke at one meeting where. The twenty, the newer heater ventilators are in more need of replacement than the old.
That's true, yeah.
So that concept was accurate, just not on the roof.
Correct.
It was a unit ventilator, so I might have misspoken at some meetings, said that, but. I thought that was interesting, that the newer heater ventilators need a replacement where they were.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. And I, and I think that also, while we've been patching as, as things have popped up. It was absolutely on the plan that we knew it was end of life, and that we were saving the money for it, that's. That was one of the first priorities that we were saving money toward. And so it's not that we weren't aware that there was a need. It's just, it's an expensive need, and we were trying to accumulate enough, Mount Vernon did the same thing, they save for their roof. Over several years, it's not uncommon to save over multiple years for a big project. So we were, um, that's why we had capital needs assessment.
Right, and it was originally scheduled to be done in F Y twenty four, this this first.
Yeah. So we're right on track with where we expected to be.
Alright, so with that, um, any other comments you have or any feedback, anything for Monday night, just feel free to send it over to me. Uh, me directly, and then I can incorporate that over the weekend as we work on the deliberative presentation, slide deck is done. Um, which I think everybody has a copy of to review, but then we also have, uh, my notes that I'll be working on, Victoria will do article twelve. I'll do the budget, the teachers' contracts. We had you doing something, and I'm totally drawing a blank what it was. What do you do at public hearing?
Public hearing, I did, uh.
Capital reserve, right?
I did facilities.
You did facilities, that's right.
But I seed the floor.
Okay, you want to do the capital reserve fund?
Sure.
How do you do that?
You know, I'll do whatever.
So article, you do article eighteen, and then I can cover, uh, I can cover the rest of the fault and everything, because default is just part of their article thirteen, so.
So, all of us are speaking, are we having Steve or Christine speak?
In terms of.
Look, as an introduction, before we get into our slide deck, I know that in the past, sometimes superintendent does, sometimes they don't. I think because we are maybe looking at a few things like. What do we look at for educational outcomes, and how do we measure, that may be a presentation that. Doesn't have to go on for very long, but that might be more perfect coming from one of you. As an introduction to, um, some of what we're talking about, I feel like. I I would appreciate something like that. Because not everyone was here with us tonight.
I'm happy to work with Steve and whatever you need.
Yeah, and Tom, whatever, we can talk about this, um, happy to do, I also know it's 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 a long night.
And we, and we haven't done it the last three years since I've been on the board, we haven't done that, uh, we've, we presented everything soup and nuts as our board. Um. And and maybe it's. Whether it's an introduction, or I remember one year, actually, Adam did it, I think my first year, and then after that, it was just us speaking.
Now, when I get in, and we have a, we have a lot to get through, I I I don't disagree.
You think about it.
But but I think, I think that framing might, might be helpful.
We find the right place for it.
This, um, was not my idea, I think this was Stephen McKeat's idea, and I don't know if it's in the slide deck, but I did think it was an interesting idea. Uh, before we go into the budget, having a slide that that just kind of shows where the money comes from and how the state, it's con- like what the state's contribution is or isn't.
I love that idea, just because I know that when we've been going out and speaking with people. Um, the first thing I ask is how long have you been in New Hampshire? And did you come from another state, because we, we have more people that come here than we think. And it is very different other places, especially very near us, it's a very top down system in Massachusetts. Very top down in Connecticut, and so, um, those are two feeder states that come to us in New Jersey. And, um, and it's. We spend quite a bit of time, if it's a group that has a lot of out of staters going over that portion of it, just how it works here, that we, um. We have towns fighting for more money from the state for a reason, because they give us mandates without fending them, and that. We are ranked nationally as one of the lowest for, um, a statewide. Amount that they pay towards education, which is why it costs as much to go to a state school here as it does to go to a private school most, um, states, so I think that. Again. I know it's a long night, but those are things that are important to to be on record as helping people to understand. Because it frames everything else that we talk about. So maybe a brief slide, I think I love that idea. Because it's a question I've definitely gotten a lot.
And I have to admit, even, um, until you have said that, I had not thought of. The higher education cost of a public university, I had known that fact. But I hadn't made the connection between what we're receiving at this level and what they're receiving at that level, and the difference that New Hampshire. Where New Hampshire funds.
Yep, so where their priorities are.
Yep.
Okay. So with that, I'll open it up for our second, uh, public comment of the night, uh, folks in attendance here, we have a handful online as well, so if you'd like to. Speak tonight here, come on up to, uh, there's no chair, actually, the chair next to Josh. Just so we can pick it up on the owl, uh, and then if you want to speak online, feel free to raise your hands, the virtual hand, and then, uh, we know the rest, everybody's names are already in there.
Yeah.
So with that, seeing none in person and seeing none online.
Yep.
I will. Remind everybody that deliberative starts at six o'clock on Monday night at South Heagan. And, uh, our next board meeting as a board is going to be February sixteenth, we will have a few things to discuss that night, we will have a non-public that night. Uh, we were going to do it tonight, but we'll just push it back to that, um, in in Luke, uh, in for the sake of time. And then tomorrow is the deadline for candidates to file if you're interested in running.
Yes.
Five o'clock tomorrow at the brick school.
And I did want to mention too, we will have childcare at deliberative, we do have high school students, um, who will be covering from, um, six P M. Until the end or nine P M, whichever, so. And we figure, um, the little ones, um, we have both the gym as well as a classroom reserved, um, and Anna Peril has been gracious enough to. Really lead that effort, has been working closely with the high school to get high school students, and, um. We're still looking for some teachers and some paraprofessionals who are non-Amherst residents, who might also be willing to help. Um, to volunteer alongside with those, um, high school students, but if anyone was thinking about coming and needs childcare, um, please join us at deliberative, because we will. Um, provide that childcare, and feel free to bring any snacks, games, um, uh, with your child.
And it's Zoom, but no comments.
Correct, and only comments are going to be in person comments, and then, uh, but you can view it on Zoom, and then it will be on YouTube after, uh, once everything is done.
You can't vote on Zoom either, right?
Correct.
Just you only.
And I just to piggyback on that, um. We were a little bit late because we were at the Y M C A, who is our our after school provider, and partner, and, um, they. We asked about maybe finding childcare on voting day as well, to help families come out if they, um, want to. Follow up for a deliberative and and be engaged in the process, so we're working on it.
Yeah, great.
Alright, well, that'll take a motion to adjourn. Go on, Josh.
I'll second.
Victoria has a second, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five, we are adjourned at six fifty two tonight, thank you, Danae.